Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Worcester City Council held in council chambers for the first time in more than a year. It's now Monday, June 7th, 2021. It's after 7:30 PM and it's nice to see everyone live as opposed to pixels on my computer. Next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday, June 21st, 2021. Should be here in council chambers, but you never know what the mandates will be in two weeks from now. Hopefully, they won't change. If you would please, Mr. Paulo, call the roll.
Mr. Ansel. Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And despite Mr. Ansel not being here, which he had told us in advance, we have a quorum, and so the agenda will remain as presented. And at this time, I ask that you stand and join the members of city council reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This is the first time in over a year I didn't have to move a flag into my office and then have to move it out of there at the end of the meeting. But Mr. Tadaro always allowed me to use the flag there in the office where I rent spaces. So it's a good feeling to be here this evening. It's a good feeling we survived COVID to this point, too. So hopefully, that continues. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May 17th, 2021 meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Sanders to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. All in favor of approving the May 17th, 2021 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and those minutes are approved. Welcome, Mayor. It's nice seeing you not only in living color, but alive and well.
Thank you, Mr. Byten dyke. Yes, it is nice to be back in this room with a city council meeting after 14 months of being gone. Our last official council meeting in this room was on March 16th of 2020. We're grateful that the Zoom platform worked so well because it truly did, but, boy, it's so much nicer to be in person. So we are truly grateful for that. All of our facilities are back to normal operations with no restrictions at this point. We are following both state and federal guidelines regarding any type of COVID mandates that would come out, and masks are not required at any of our facilities at this time except for Worcester Community Hospital, who still utilize it to help prevent any type of infections up there. The Worcester area Chamber of Commerce held their annual dinner on Thursday, May 20th. Worcester Community Hospital was honored with the Business of the Year Award for 2021, and Mary Alice Streeter was as well-deserved Wall of Fame recipient. Boy, it's been a while since I've done this, huh? Congratulations to them and all the honorees that were selected. I attended a regular land bank meeting with the county on May 21st. The board was tasked with looking through a list of delinquent properties and marking ones that we would recommend be sold at the next meeting. This land bank group has been a good thing for our city in cleaning up delinquent properties and helping us keep control over the housing stock within our city, so we're thankful for that. I was involved with normal meetings of hospital board, finance committee, Main Street Worcester Board, and Worcester Growth Corp. since the last time we were together. We were also involved with discussions with groups interested in possible housing developments in the city, a ribbon-cutting celebration for the Children's Advocacy Center, office improvements, a conversation with the commissioners regarding development tools available in our community and their uses, a Memorial Day remembrance at Worcester Cemetery, and a retirement celebration for George Grandy, part of our PPM or Public Property Maintenance Group, retiring after 32 years with the City of Worcester. George, I think, may come back in some part-time capacities, which we would welcome. He's got a wealth of knowledge that would be very helpful. We received an email, which I forwarded on to city council from Tom Martin, about how our city has helped Gojo, ending with, "This is just the latest of many examples over the years of how we have enjoyed the partnership and support of the excellent services the city provides. I want to express our appreciation and gratitude for what Worcester Fire has done and continues to do for us." So I see Barry Salee, our chief, over there, and I know they've had a very strong working relationship with Gojo, and it's truly appreciated by Mr. Martin's comments. So thank you, Barry, and your team. All of the parks, pools, spray ground, and pavilions and chalet are all open and available to the public. So far, everything is working fine, other than the weather. We had the pools planned to open on Memorial Day weekend, and it ended up being too cold to open them, so we opened them during the week, and they are back open again, hopefully every day now. Let's see, "Look forward to a good summer of public use and enjoyment of our parks and facilities." Construction of Clear Creek Park has resumed and should be completed and ready for use by this fall, so we're grateful for the Seaman family and look forward to having a new park in our midst here later this year. You'll notice that many paving projects have started or will be starting or are underway. That's going to be continuing, which is a great thing unless you have to try to figure a way around them. So please bear with us, but that truly is a good thing for all of our community. With that, I think that's everything that I have for council as far as announcements tonight and here to help with the meeting as it unfolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have any petitions, and no one signed up for tonight's meeting, so we'll move right on to committee reports, which are none. But we do have a public hearing. It's on the tax budget. It will be chaired by Mr. Myers. So, Mr. Myers, I turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, President Byten dyke. I'd like to open the public hearing for the 2022 tax budget, and we will start this evening with questions or comments.
Thank you. We'll open the hearing for the 2022 tax budget, and we'll start this evening with any questions or comments from the audience. If you would like to speak, please state your name and address and to whom the question would be addressed. We have Ms. Lash here from the city administration to answer any questions that are detail-related regarding the budget. Is there anyone here this evening to ask questions that is in favor of supporting the 2022 tax budget? And then, is there anyone here that would like to speak or ask questions that is opposed to the 2022 tax budget as presented? You might get off easy this evening. Is there anyone on city council that has any specific questions you'd like addressed this evening during the hearing?
We'll address those.
We'll do that at the meeting.
Since this is for the public.
So if there's no comment from the public for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing on the 2022 tax budget at this time. Thank you, President Byten dyke.
Well, thank you for chairing it. We'll consider the public hearing on the 2022 tax budget as being held. I guess when you bring in the A-team, that no one has any questions. So be scared, Mr. Dordia, be very scared. Okay, that brings us to unfinished business, and that will be the second reading of Resolution Number 2021-26. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers, who just held the public hearing on the tax budget. But before I get there, for the first time in a long time, live, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2021-26, a resolution providing for the annual tax budget for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, President Byten dyke. As we just had the public hearing, we will now open this for discussion. We will leave it as having its second reading this evening. The tax budget will need to be passed on or before our July 15th meeting, but I will leave it on second reading, and we will address this at our next meeting when Mr. Ansel is returned. So at this point, though, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Ms. Lash is here, and she's got her papers all prepared.
I know that she prepared for it, too.
Okay.
They just do such a nice job putting it all together and sharing it with us that it's so thorough.
It's, they always do a great job. It's very thorough and detailed, and even someone like me, you know, as an eighth grader, I can even understand it. Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, since Ms. Lash is here and prepared, is there anything you'd like to just outline for council that maybe is a little bit different from last year or significantly different from last year that we should know about?
Honestly, not much. Andre starts with the numbers that are in your 2022 projections, as you saw in your 2021 appropriations budget. He did increase personal services by 3% for next year. O and M, operations and maintenance, 2.75, and we're expecting an increase in income tax of about 2.75% as well.
Great. Excellent, thank you.
Does anyone else have any further questions this evening?
Oh, just briefly, maybe the Fire Station 1 renovations. See, that's earmarked $3 million for the estimated complete cost, but 1.5 for the year ahead. I assume that's going to be broken into two years.
I think all three of us could probably go right ahead, gentlemen.
So initially, we budgeted approximately $3 million based on estimates we had multiple years ago on a feasibility study for the Station 1 renovation. So at that point, it was just an earmark of what we were anticipating. We finalized the design team and preparing a contract to bring to council for the design phase, which then will give us a better estimate where we are closer to budget, budget time to give a much more firmer number. And that's one of the deadlines that we did pose to all the design firms that we interviewed were, are you able to get us good estimates to bring to council at the November budget process meeting?
Sure, that's a prudent approach.
Thank you. Is there any further questions from council this evening? If not, we will say that we've now had the second reading of Resolution Number 2021-26, the annual tax budget for 2022. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to new business. First reading of Resolution Number 2021-29. It'll be presented by Mr. Bastancic. It is budgeted, so would not require suspension of the rules, but does require, Ms. Paulo, if she would be so kind, to read the title.
Resolution Number 2021-29, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with Pogomire Design Group for professional engineering services related to the city's proposed Oak Hill-Oldman Road roundabout project and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours.
As just stated, this will, this is a request to authorize an advertisement for bids and to enter a contract with Pogomire Design Group. This will fund, this will be money for the funding for the design work of a proposed roundabout at the intersection of Oak Hill and Oldman Road. Due to anticipated development in this area, the administration feels that this would be the best solution to the anticipated increase in traffic that would be incurred with new development and would also improve safety. The total estimated cost of the design contract would be $82,000. Construction would begin when or if TIF money would become available. It could be as soon as this year or possibly next. While the suspension of not rules is not necessary, the engineering department would like to start the design work as soon as possible. I don't know, Roger, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's, you said it's for the design of the proposed roundabout. I think we've got in our budget for 2023, but it's part of that TIF program that we're working on. With the anticipated development there at the corner of Oak Hill and Oldman, we're thinking, and of course, the school's right there. So this intersection's been deficit for a while, so.
Just as a point of reference, is that something that is going to be, I mean, similar to the one at Smithville Western in '83?
Correct, yeah, yeah, they're all about the same.
About the same?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But won't this one be just a three-way roundabout?
Well, it'll be three, but it'll be a leg for the park.
Okay.
So say three and a half.
If there are no further questions, I'd like to move to adopt.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any further questions? Sounds like a good idea. I know that's a bottleneck there, especially when the school gets out in the morning as well, so. Good idea. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-29 passes. We'll turn our attention to Resolution Number 2021-30. It will be presented by Mr. Bastancic. Again, it is budgeted. Before I get back to Mr. Bastancic, I will ask Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2021-30, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase and installation of traffic signals and related equipment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours again, sir.
Thank you. This one is fairly straightforward as well. As mentioned, this resolution would fund the replacement of traffic signals serving Beaver Street at its intersections with Hendry and South Streets and Market Street at its intersections at Hendry and South Streets. These particular intersections have been identified as particularly in poor condition as far as the streetlights are concerned, and have been requiring increasing amounts of maintenance over the years. This project would also include pedestrian crossing signals as well. Total estimated cost of this project is $600,000 and will come out of the capital improvement fund.
Yes, people cannot believe how expensive traffic signals are anymore. Mr. Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a couple of questions in that regard. Obviously, this was budgeted, I understand that. It's two major intersections. I guess in light of the fact that I know certain raw material costs have gone up significantly over the past year and probably six months especially, I just didn't know. I know a lot of times with these replacements, there's parts that we can save, you know, reuse, and I didn't know, without knowing exactly what parts were failing, it didn't have that kind of detail on the resolution, but, you know, is there anything we can save out of this? Maybe Roger would know.
No, they're in dire need of replacement, total replacement.
So wiring, signals, poles?
Correct.
We doing new poles and everything?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, we can't save any poles or anything, huh?
Well, no, we welded them a couple times, so.
Okay.
No, time to replace everything.
Sounds good, all right.
Approximately how many years old are those, Roger?
I don't have that information with me.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know.
And truly, because George Grandy's not here to nurse them along any longer, that's going to be part of the problem.
Well, they've been going out on a weekly basis.
He spent a lot of time parked under those signals fixing things, so.
Yeah, most people don't understand about, for a set, it's about, with everything else, about 150,000.
For intersection, correct.
You got four sets, it's 600,000.
And then some of them don't have the pedestrian signals.
Right.
So we're adding those, so.
It's going to be safer.
How, with Mr. Byten dyke's quote of, and this was probably pre-COVID pricing on intersection signals, how has that increased cost-wise? Has it increased?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
You'll find out when I bid it out.
Gotcha, okay.
That's the best estimate I have for right now.
I'm sure it's gone up. I'll be interested to hear how much.
What the wait is, is the lead time for the poles.
Sure.
So you can't order the pole until you have the foundation in the ground, and then it's at least nine months.
Wow.
So we'll put the foundations in, and then you won't see anything happen for nine months.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That's sort of a unique intersection anyway, whereas it's two-way, the one, you know, headed east?
Yeah, there's a one-way.
And it's one-way the other side. Does that play into the cost factor?
No, no.
No?
No. Well, it actually helps a little bit because there's one less signal on the other side.
If there are no other questions, I move to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. You know, you can speak up now because I can hear you, I suppose, the one we were on Zoom. I might not always see that hand. I was looking for your hand.
What?
Prior. Any other questions? I think it's pretty explanatory. There's a need, and we need to address it, so. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-30 passes. We'll look at Resolution Number 2021-31. It will be presented by Mr. Silvestri. This, too, is a budgeted item and will not require suspension of the rules, but, Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2021-31, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the rehabilitation of sanitary sewer lines and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. In our continued quest to limit the infiltration of groundwater into our sanitary sewer system, we're going to continue our repair plan and program for the sanitary sewer system throughout the city. There are a number of streets, segments of streets, on this year's list. The costs were outlined, but it was a pretty lengthy list, so I know Roger had sent that to me separately, and I'll go over those briefly, just so council is aware. Christmas Run Boulevard, Cleveland Road, Dorchester, Grandview Avenue, Madison Avenue, all those are eight-inch replacements. There's a couple 10-inch. Those are a segment on Maple Street and also Western Drive. And then we have areas of Sunrise View, West Henry Street, and West Liberty Street that are all going to replace, I believe it's from the detail you sent me, clay pipe, correct?
Correct.
So we're replacing the clay with the new material.
We're lining the existing sewer.
I'm sorry, we're lining the existing clay. And if you've ever seen, I did have a constituent years ago, the City of Worcester was kind enough to run video through the pipe and give it to the one resident that it applied to, and it's pretty neat, the technology that they use to literally crawl through the pipe with a robot and check for, you know, the condition, the interior of the pipe. So we want to line that to keep roots from penetrating and breaching that, and then obviously, it causes problems as those roots grow, and you can see how that would shatter the pipe and create a lot of work for our maintenance division. So that being said, I will be asking to, I will be moving this forward for adoption. So I guess with that, this evening, Mr. President, I do move for adoption.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Is this the technique where they put a liner and run steam through it to set it? Okay. And like a rain today, my rain gauge showed over six tenths of an inch. When we have infiltration like this, they can't believe how much gets through to the sewer system.
Correct, the sewer plant knows immediately.
Yep, exactly.
Then we got to pay to process all that extra water.
Yep, exactly. Any further questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-31 passes. Resolution Number 2021-32 will be presented by Mr. Sanders. There is schedule for three readings, and before I, again, get to you, Mr., for the first time, Mr. Sanders, I'll have, if she would, Mr. Paulo read the title.
Resolution Number 2021-32, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with Wayne County and the City of Orville for making an application to the Ohio Development Services Agency for a small city's community development block grant for community housing impact and preservation chip funds and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is not a new program. We've done this multiple times in the past, and the legislation that we have in front of us this evening is, again, to authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with Wayne County and the City of Orville. Part of the application process is the Ohio Development Services likes to see these partnerships developed in the communities, and in this case, through the county and other cities in the county. The total amount that we would be applying for is $1,011,000, with $350,000 to be targeted for on-use or for use on qualified projects in Wayne County, and then $661,000 targeted for projects beyond our city limits. So allocations are flexible and maybe, and historically have been, shared between the partners, and, like you say, this is something that we've done in the past, and we've had much success with. I mean, it has been a project, or it's been a situation where, you know, we've had, in the past, part in projects where we've had, you know, we've saved homes, we've helped, you know, this allows us to preserve housing for low-income households while still advancing, excuse me, enhancing neighborhoods and improving aesthetics and real estate values. So with that, in light of the fact we've done this in the past, I will just motion to suspend rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Anything further? This is something, as Mr. Sanders said, we applied for these funds every year. It's not an allocation of funds, it's just allow the mayor to enter into an agreement, so. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-32 passes. That brings us to 2021-33. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. I see Mr. Pop from Wayne Metropolitan Housing here, and I'm sorry, I don't know your associate's name, so.
Tanya Sargent is the administrator of the program out of our office.
Oh, okay, all right. And I've probably met her, and it just, vagaries of age that I just can't remember, so I apologize. Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2021-33, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority for administrative consulting services for a small city's community development block grant for a community housing impact and preservation chip program and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours again, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as we've Again, as we've, um, we stayed to the last legislation, this is a, something that we've done in the past. We've utilized the folks over at Wayne Metro Housing Authority for consulting services and administrating our, um, $1,011,000 that we're going to ask, uh, for the chip program. Uh, in the past, they've done a fantastic job for us. We appreciate, appreciate their work on this. Uh, is there anything that either one of you would like to add related to this, this evening?
Of course.
Okay.
My name is Stan Pop with the Wayne Metropolitan.
I think you might have to do the button on the bottom.
You have a lot of free time on your hands at this meeting there, Mr. Sanders.
Glad you can still showcase your technological skills. Thank you. Uh, my name is Stan Pop. I'm with the Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority. Our office has operated or administered the, the chip program in one form or another since 1994. With the exception of two years, we did not get a grant. Uh, we have been doing that consistently since then. The first few years with the county, and we did, uh, a few years with doing both a grant with the county and then with the city, and then the partnership a few years ago, um, materialized and has been a, uh, a much more efficient way to, to administer the program. As Mr. Sanders noted, this has been done before. We are somewhere in the neighborhood of just under 650 homes that we have tended to, uh, over the years. Uh, made neighborhoods nicer, uh, families more comfortable and able to live in, in, um, housing that's, uh, meets standards. We, um, we are going to hopefully, if, um, if you approve this contract, we're going to get a little bit more money than we had in the last grant because Tanya wants to make more money. Costs have, costs have in, increased, um, significantly. Uh, we're hoping that, um, that material costs and things will come down once this, this grant is awarded by the state, hopefully. Um, or we'll find ourselves doing a few less, um, projects, maybe, uh, with that $1,011,000. But, uh, we're hoping for another good, uh, good outcome. Questions?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, maybe. Do you find that the, uh, the general public has, uh, knowledge of these programs? I know, I, I probably understand the, the, uh, the money that does go rather rapidly. Is that? It, we, we have, we have, in, in past years, we have done things like putting an ad in the, in the daily record or putting something on the, the cable news. But most times, uh, the applications come quicker than we can advertise for. So whether it's word of mouth, um, and of course, we, we do some rental rehab using local landlords, um, that do a match, uh, participation, we, we seldom have a, seldom have a problem finding applicants for those. And, uh, as well, uh, when we, when we come across families in the community who have houses that, that are deteriorated, or the city lets us know that there's a, a maintenance issue with a property, we make a contact and, uh, and offer if, uh, if an application hasn't been forthcoming already, so.
Okay, thank you.
It is a true, uh, community partnership.
Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pop.
So just to add a little-
Five minutes of fame there, Tanya? Okay. I don't want to, I forgot your name. I don't want to.
The, uh, yeah, the contract amount is $121,000 for the, uh, the, the consulting services, and it would run through, uh, 2021 application through April 30th of 2024. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, Mr. Sanders has, uh, moved to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to, to suspend the rules, please?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, I look to you again.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion?
If we don't pass it this evening, does that mean Ms. Tag, Sergeant would have to come back and speak next time?
Maybe. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yeah.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2021-33 passes. Thank you both for coming this evening. You may, you're welcome to stay, but if you duck out, we won't hold it against you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have an ordinance number 2021-22 involving, uh, alley vacation, uh, and, uh, the attorney for the applicant, uh, Mr. Long's here. Uh, this will be presented by Mr. Bastancic. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Paolo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2021-22. An ordinance vacating an unnamed alley running in a southeast direction in the City of Worcester from Glenn Avenue to the northwest corner of Lot 3627.
All right, Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Um, what we have here is a petition by FNB Properties to vacate the unnamed alley which runs southeast from Glenn Avenue to the northwest corner of Lot 3627, between Lot numbers 3624, 3625, 3626, and 3627. And I'm sure everybody knows where those are. But, uh, all, and then all lots abutting the alley to be vacated are also owned by FSNB, FNB Properties. Um, Andrew Dutton of Planning and Zoning, Police Chief Matt Fisher, Fire Chief Barry Sally, and Roger Kobalosik of Engineering have expressed no opposition to this petition. Uh, by passing this ordinance, City Council states that it is satisfied that there is good cause for vacating said alley, and that it will not be detrimental to the general interest, interest of the public. At this point, this is pretty straightforward, but I would, at this point, I know Mr. Long is here, would maybe like to say a couple of words.
Were you trying to get him to justify his feet tonight?
Yes.
I see. And did he ask to be at the end of the, uh, meetings?
No, I, I warned him. I was going to come to him when he was over here.
Mr. Biden Deck has appropriately pointed out that I need to do a little bit to justify my time here this evening, but I will keep my comments brief. Frankly, I'm thrilled to be back in person with council, uh, and to exit Zoom time and be able to present to you, uh, what I think is, uh, has noted a pretty simple application. Uh, FNB Properties over the last couple of years has assembled the adjacent parcelage around this. This is adjacent to what you probably know as the old Swift Auto Parts building, uh, what I think positively and we hope to bring back in the future, part of a potential redevelopment, uh, revitalization of this segment of town that I think is much overdue. But today, the request is relatively simple, and that's to vacate the alley, which will open up some opportunity for, uh, resurvey and lot consolidation. Certainly, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
It, the alley basically dead ends into the back of that other property. Is that other property part of the, where the trailer park was, or is that, or is that south, west of that still?
Yeah, it's, so it's southwest of the trailer park. I, I'm trying to remember the road that the trailer park that separates the two lots.
So there's another cutoff. That's, that's not just-
Yeah.
Okay, and those, those don't attach?
No, they don't attach.
So there's no thorough, no through, or no throughway traffic there at all?
Right. The, the lot used to serve as what, um, uh, the, the center lot from a topographic standpoint, the lot that kind of is the donut, the whole of the donut. This was the access for the whole of the donut, which has been subsequently acquired by FNB.
Okay. So it's no longer necessary?
Yeah. Right.
Uh, alley can't have much use if it has no name.
Sir, did you, you, I think you mentioned, did you mention earlier that you, that this whole thing could be absorbed into maybe one larger lot then, for, for some use in the future?
Right, right. Uh, right now, FNB is in conversations with the city administration, planning department. We hope to bring back other applications and see you again in the future, but decided that this was a prudent first step.
If there are no other comments, um, I'd like to make a motion to put this on third and final.
All right, thank you for taking time out of your evening and, uh, enlightening us here, Mr. Long. So there's a motion by Mr. Bastancic to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Uh, Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
And the rules are suspended. Uh, do you have another motion there, Mr. Bastancic? Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Anything further? I think this is going to be a great, uh, project if, uh, all the planets align and it looks like they're, uh, heading that way, so. Seeing nothing else, then, uh, would you please call the roll on the, uh, motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Silvestri?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2021-22 passes.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Final, thanks, Mr. Long. Final piece of legislation, uh, tonight is ordinance number 2021-23. It, too, will be presented by Mr. Bastancic, and like its predecessor, it is slated for, uh, three readings. Before I get back to you, Mr. Bastancic, for the last time, Mr. Paolo, would you read the title of this ordinance?
Ordinance number 2021-23. An ordinance vacating an unnamed alley running in a southwest direction in the City of Worcester from Market Street to the southeast corner of Lot EMT 503.
All right, Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours again, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this petition to vacate the alley south of Fire Station Number One comes at the request of the City of Worcester and Fire Chief Sally in particular. Um, I would look, he says, uh, Chief Sally wrote a letter to the city outlining why, why he was requesting this. I'm going to quote from, because it, I think it, uh, explains it better than I could. Uh, from his letter, he said, "The division of fire is in the preliminary stages of renovation project for Fire Station Number One. I am requesting to vacate the alley so that we may enhance the safety of our staff, reduce the liability, the reliability of motor vehicle accidents, expand the available footprint for the renovation project, and replod five city-owned parcels to meet the zoning requirements. Uh, the request to vacate the alley that is sandwiched between the, the parcels owned by the city. This request will still allow the remainder of the alley to be utilized and enabled traffic to exit on Bixler Court to the east and west, or through the driveways located on Market Street." Um, and for me, I should note, also note that, I should note that all the properties abutting the alley are city-owned.
Okay.
And, um, I also told, uh, Chief Sally I'd be calling on him if he would like to make a few extra comments or have any, if council has any other questions.
Yeah, I have no additional comments. I, I mean, it's a clear, um, need. Most people, if you would look at the site or drove by the station, you would think it was just the driveway into our rear parking lot. Um, so we do have our ship commander's vehicle who exits out of a South Bay door right onto that alley, and it's almost a blind exit. So regardless of what our design team comes up with, uh, for that area, just that elimination of that potential traffic accident is a, is a safety concern that I would like to eliminate. So I believe this is prudent all around and gives us a lot of flexibility for maximizing not only the renovation project for the fire station, but all the traffic and, uh, parking flow from the city, um, City Hall and Fire Station campus.
But along those lines, there's not been any issue with traffic in the past?
Very little traffic, um, coming up and down, um, into that, other than our own staff members driving into the back lot.
And so this will re, I'm sorry, um, so this will remain a roadway or a thoroughfare for, um, your staff, but it will be close to the public? Is that correct? It won't be built upon?
Well, we don't know that yet.
Okay.
Like, uh, Mr. Long said as well, is we're trying to, we're going to vacate it as a first step so that we can look at the entire project as a campus. If we de, if we determine that, uh, going south gives us a better footprint, minimizes utilizing the other parking out for, uh, the City Hall parking lot. Um, in lieu of building out there, we may maximize that space, but we've engaged with the design team to be creative. Um, if that's out in any direction or up, um, we just need to provide them with the most flexibility that we possibly can because we are landlocked, but our initial, um, station, um, study did indicate that that location is perfect for our response. Um, and looking at our downtown district, there is very little property to, you know, to look at to do a new station that would provide us the same access that we currently have. So this just provides the city the best po, possible option for expansion and safety.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief Sally, I mean, for council that we might remember, a few years ago, we brought, we purchased the property just south of this alley for the specific purpose of possibly needing it for an expansion, not knowing exactly, like you said, which way we'd go. Uh, but this will then allow a larger canvas for the design team to decide what, how to best utilize our, our current property and our holdings, so.
And, and you are correct in that, um, statement, as the city made a purchase agreement, uh, went through that, and then there was some renegotiations that was, um, in my own words, uh, detrimental to the city without having a plan in place. And at that point, um, I believe the city administration decided that it wasn't prudent to move forward with that purchase contract. Um, you know, now that we are three, four years out, um, this will allow us to at least expand into that other parcel. So we would, we have approximately, uh, 40 feet or so on that other side of the alley that we can maximize, even without utilizing the, the, uh, parcel next to that.
Oh, with the building on it?
Huh?
Yeah, you mean, yeah, before we get to the one with the building on it?
Yes, sir. Okay, yes.
We didn't buy it. He just said.
Yeah. We just have the lot.
I don't think most people know that is an alley running there.
I agree. If you look at it, you're going to tell. You know, sometimes we have people zooming in there, and they must just know, but there's very little traffic. And a lot of times, um, it's when we're doing activities. So when we do host testing, ladder testing, um, and even training out on that area, you know, we're very concerned about just people zipping in and coming, um, out the back, so. But that still provides access, and, um, like we said, one of the concerns of, um, Joel's issue with parking, um, and looking at this project as a campus and not just a singular, um, you know, fire station renovation, this gives us all those flexibilities to maximize our, our space.
Sounds good. Uh, I know, I was talking to you earlier about it, um, excuse me. Uh, a couple of years ago, um, you showed me a, uh, was that a preliminary plan of the renovations, or is that going to be changed somewhat to, to maybe, uh, take into this additional space?
So it may change. So, um, a few years ago, when we started the process, we utilized Bowen, uh, who did, was the architect at the Safety Center. And we asked them, just as a feasibility study, you know, what, what will it cost? What's our space? Can we even do this based on the, um, station study that was, you know, 10 years ago? Um, so that, that was our initial request, is can we renovate? Do we have to do new? What is our options? So they threw out a few options and some general budgetary numbers. And at that point, it was just as simple, we can do a butt out here and a butt out here. Um, so to the north and to the west of the, the station, because we weren't, um, you know, aggressive in identifying if that alley was going to be vacated or not. So that was, um, looked at without vacating the alley. Now, the new design firm, um, and all of them that we interviewed, that was one of our, um, suggestions to them was, uh, be creative. We're landlocked. Um, we want you to really think outside the box, bring in your design team's expertise for renovation fire stations, um, and see what way we could maximize our entire area. And like I said earlier, all directions and up are all on the table at this point. And we want to be very, um, you know, imaginative to make a, uh, one cost-effective solution, uh, but give the firefighters the space that they need so that they can safely perform their job. Uh, but also, I would really like there to be some architectural design, you know, as this building and our other downtown buildings are very, um, stoic. I would like to keep that kind of flow going down Market Street to have a, um, a presence as a fire station in our community.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to motion to put this on third and final.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bostancic to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the roll?
Bostancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Mr. Bostancic?
I'll move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bostancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers, I think was the first person I heard, even though it was kind of a staccato down the line there. Anything further? The petitioner who signed the petition isn't even here to grill. Anyways, seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bostancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
And Warden?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 2021 dash 23 passes. Mr. Sally's been spending a lot of money in the last 10 years here.
I think there was a very smart man who told me not to show up, so I took a very, I took some time off.
He took a little vacation, but, you know, I've still not gotten to see our new ladder truck because, you know, when you got that, it was just about the time COVID hit.
Oh, yes.
We were going to have a meeting, or an open house for council just before a meeting, and it was like the week before that COVID struck.
We had, we had a whole, not event, but we were going to do our swearing-in for multiple officers and new firemen. We haven't got sworn in yet. We're going to do an open house and a new truck, and it happened. So we're still now, since everything is being rolled back, we're planning on doing that so we can get everybody to warn it, and also so you guys can see.
Yes, they are.
And the facility, current facilities and these apps. So we will issue the invitation to see if that is fine.
So I assume the new ladder truck has worked out fine?
It has. It worked out very nicely. We've been, multiple calls on it now, utilizing it, and it, it works very, very well. And it's, well, one, it starts in the lines.
That's always good.
It's better than the previous one we got rid of. But it is a very nice piece of apparatch. So we appreciate your guys' support.
Well, we want the best for our firefighters and for the citizens of the city of Worcester, that's for sure. All right, brings us to the miscellaneous portion. Well, we'll just go down the row, and we'll start with Mr. Cavan.
Oh, well, hey, welcome. I'm glad to see everybody again. Feels good to be back in the hive here, so. Other than that, I don't have anything to add to today's agenda, but again, it was a nice feeling to come back.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I, the only thing I'd like to add, and I think the mayor addressed this nicely, just to thank Chief Sally and your, your crew, because I think that you really represented Worcester quite well in the dealings that you've had with Gojo. It was really nice to hear such accolades from, from the corporation and from the leadership there. So thank you.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, that was nice to hear. Thanks again, and looking forward to what we come up with in terms of a design for renovating the fire station down here. So good to be back in person. We still miss Mr. Ansel, and we look forward to seeing him at the next meeting.
Yes. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden Dyke. It's good to be back, and I appreciate everybody's participation. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sanders?
I have nothing to add this evening.
And Mr. Bostancic, since you had the most legislation, it's probably appropriate that you have the last word here.
No, I just, like everyone else, I'm glad to be back. I, Zoom was a nice tool, but it gave me a headache at the end. And no glitches, but you don't have a lot of glitches when you're sitting in public, so.
Yeah, it, it is a good feeling, and I'm sure, like I said, Mr. Scavelli has to be a lot more rested than he was after a meeting. And I know I was tired keeping track of everyone on the screen, but you had a lot more duties. And speaking of Gojo, one quick anecdote for reasons, I was up at one of the hospitals in Akron, and I noted that all the sanitation stations they had for the hand, Gojo, whose home is Akron, it wasn't Gojo that they had contracted with. I thought that was pretty ironic, and I thought how lucky we are to have them here and, you know, and I can't imagine us turning our back on them and having someone else provide that in our city offices and buildings, so.
Yeah, so we definitely have Gojo products in, in our hospital and within our city ranks, and they've been a great partner through this whole pandemic. If, if we were ever running short of anything, they, they would, would help us out and rectify that by some, some means. So no, wonderful relationship there, and we're very appreciative of having them in our community.
Yep. Well, seeing nothing else, other than it was nice seeing everyone's smiling faces, and I missed the personal contact. And I need someone, since Mr. Ansel isn't there.
On behalf of Mr. Ansel, I'll motion to adjourn.
All right, Mr. Myers, proxy of Mr. Ansel, has moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Multiple, multiple seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.